I'd like to call it to order the Canton Township Board of Trustees regular board meeting on September 9, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Legions? And Chief Chad, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have some?
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Treasurer Diane Slavens as temporary clerk for today's meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Foster, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Seacrest is not here today. Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Slavens, good evening. Berninski.
Good evening.
And Ansari.
Good evening.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, moving a resolution to the end, but keeping everything else the same?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we adopt the agenda as written, moving the recognition and formal resolution to the end of the meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by everybody, so we can take our best on that one. Thank you. First we will have, we are going to begin with a presentation by Judge Cobb regarding 10 Minutes to Justice Outreach Program presented by the Third Judicial Circuit Court of Michigan. So Judge Cobb, if you want to come to the front, what I will do, I will share this. I believe Devin says we will all be able to see this.
Right here?
Yes.
All right.
And just let me know when you want the slides turned.
Okay. I'll do my best. I know you'll do your best. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To this majestic, I would even say, township trustees and to all of the wonderful folks that we have over here, including my good friend of 25 years, Chief Chad Ball, and all of the citizens of this wonderful township. Again, my name is Judge Bradley Cobb, and I am here on behalf of the Third Judicial Circuit Court of Michigan, also known as Wayne County Circuit Court. Boy, you know, you, it's, was that Mike Tyson says you, everything's fine until you're hit in the mouth, and here I am hitting the mouth and feel just a little bit nervous, which is not like me. But nonetheless, we're here. Why am I here? I'm here on behalf of the Third Circuit because I should be here. The judges certainly and the, all of the employees of Wayne County work for you. You're part of the greater Wayne County community, and that's why I'm here. But I'm also here for the court because, click the slide. All right. I'm here as, as our initiative, if you will, to, for community outreach, to communicate throughout Wayne County to all, I think it's 27, not including Detroit and Hampton, 27 communities, is it 29? Someone up there probably knows better than me.
In Wayne County?
Yes.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Oh, I shortchanged this, didn't I? Maybe I'm thinking about district courts, I don't know. But nonetheless, I'm here to, to talk about that and to bridge this gap or to certainly reach out to you all to talk about emphasizing access to justice, providing education about our court and jury service and much more. We also support several different activities, annual events, Adoption Day, New Lawyer, Swearing In, Reunification Day, Law Day, and a variety of other activities. Slide. The Third Judicial Circuit Court and its Michigan impact. We are a trial court. That means that we sit, in most of the cases that we have, either they go to trial or certainly there, there is the ability to go to trial. We sit right under the Court of Appeals, which sits under the Michigan Supreme Court. And then under us are, the district courts are separate, but I was hoping one of my good friends, Judge Plakis or Judge Giroux were here where I could say that we sat on top of them, but they're not here. So if you see them, let them know I sat it.
We'll let them know.
All right? And then we have, of course, we have probate and municipal court. All of our decisions that we make as trial court judges can be appealed first to the Court of Appeals and then to the Michigan Supreme Court. Slide. Thank you. We're a big court. If you didn't know, we, 49 communities, right? Then that makes us a big court. We have 59 judges, 21 are with criminal, and I have served on the criminal division. Having been a prosecutor for 25 and a half years, it made it an easy rotation for me to be in the criminal division. We have 19 judges in civil, 11 in family court for domestic, six in family or juvenile, two in probate, two probate court judges are assigned to the Third Circuit Court, 24 referees. I'm not going to read all this. That's what's hampering me a little bit. I like to go just ripped, but I'll try to get as much information to you as possible. We have four locations, KMAC Building for civil and family domestic, Lincoln Hall of Justice for juvenile, the new Criminal Justice Center, which we recently had our first birthday. We're one year old, and it's, used to be Frank Murphy, where I'm sure many of you did had jury duty, and now we're in the Criminal Justice Center, which is off of 75 on Russell Street. And lastly, front of the court in Penobscot Building. Slide, please. Our mission as the Third Circuit Court is to serve the community by providing accessible and equal justice for all. Our vision is to be an exemplary and innovative court, leading with integrity and providing justice and public service. Just in thinking about this particular slide and, and the impact of what I just said, is I think about Canton Township as a, as a community, a very diverse community. I think in my minds, I'm one of the most diverse communities in Wayne County. I'm a resident of Canton Township and have been for 30 years, early next year, so I love Canton. So, slide. Thank you. Again, we're commonly known as Wayne County Circuit Court. We're funded by the State of Michigan and Wayne County. We work in cooperation with, of course, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, the Wayne County Clerk's Office, as well as the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. Next slide. We have several divisions, civil, talked about criminal division, family domestic, family juvenile. Civil is folks in there fighting over money, property and contracts. Criminal, of course, we handle adult felonies that are bound over from the district courts and criminal appeals from the district court level. Family, domestic, of course, divorce, child support and other things. And lastly, for divisions, the family juvenile division, which handles juvenile delinquency under age 18, child protection, adoption, guarding matters, intruency. My good buddy, who I still don't see here tonight, Judge Mark Slavens, started out in the juvenile division and then was appointed to the Third Circuit, and he works with me or I work with him, he's been there longer. All right? We are the busiest court. Next slide. We're the busiest circuit court in Michigan. It's probably not that hard for those of you who work the political spectrum, even some of our officers to, and others who, to think about, but we are the busiest court, circuit court in Michigan. We are, is it two and a half times Oakland County?
Yeah, two and a half.
Think about that. We handle two and a half more cases, that much more work than Oakland County, and Oakland County is the next biggest. And after that, you can imagine that we dwarf all the other circuit courts in Michigan. As you can see, in 2024, these are just new cases, added to pending cases, 59,303 cases over the course of the year. Next slide, please. Now, jury trials, and don't anyone try to hide, you didn't get summons yesterday, but when I say that, in most places, people, the first thing they ask me is, how do I get out of jury service? And my answer is, you don't. And if I knew, I wouldn't tell you. Why? Because jury service is, yes, it sounds trite to say, but it's our civic duty. It sounds trite to say that we should do that as citizens, but it's the truth, Ruth, right? Because that is just something that we owe to the citizens, and we owe it to ourselves, hard fought, to get the right to serve on a jury. So please, ma'am, sir, if you see me in Meyer or Kroger or Walmart, don't ask me how to get out. All right? I already told you, you're not getting out. But you'll get this, this summons and qualifications are jurors are listed, 18 years of age, U.S. citizen, Wayne County resident, ability to communicate in English, physically and mentally able to serve, have not served on a jury within one year, and no felony record. Most people who have been to, to, down to court, and particularly in the last few years, say that they have a good experience. If you don't have a bad experience, please reach out because we want to do better, and we strive to serve the citizens of Wayne County efficiently, effectively, and in a way that assures that justice is meted out. All right? One last, and I'll be out of your way. See these lovely group, group of people? I wish I could blow it up to show you the guy who is standing in that front row, but on the far right as you look to it, very handsome young man, I think is Judge Bradley Cobb. Yeah. But this is the full bench, with the exception of a few judges who didn't make it. This is the, the last picture that we have of a full bench. That's the Wayne County Circuit Court in 10 minutes, 12 minutes, did I steal two from you? All right? So if you don't mind, maybe there's just a couple quick questions, because I don't want, I know this isn't the Bradley Cobb Show, so.
So where's Mark Slavens? I'm just kidding. Let me see if he's a third one here. He's a third one in the second row.
He's right here. All right? All right. Any, any quick questions that I can answer?
Well, thank you so much for giving the presentation, and I appreciate you going around to all the communities. This is wonderful. So thank you, this was fantastic.
Yeah, this is something that we're, we're big on now, and we, we should be big on it because we work for you. In the back are handouts on jury services, if you want to pick it up.
How does, how do college students, when they're, if they're out of state and they get a jury duty notice, what do they do?
They can usually get a deferment, and for the most part, if they're, if they're local, of course, you know, we try to work with them, but they may end up on there anyway. But if, you can get a deferment. And if you're 70 years of age, 72 years of age, you don't have to serve unless you want to. You could just write, you know, now, don't, if you're 65, don't put your 72.
Now, how do people get, and I've had people say, how do I get to do jury duty and I've never been called?
Yeah. It's, it's random, there's, you know, there's a system, but I don't know exactly how it works, but everyone should get a summons, you know? If you want me to put your name in, I will.
No problem.
Any more questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Judge Cobb.
All right, I appreciate it. Oh, there's a question?
Oh, sorry.
It's, I guess, more of a comment, but I learned, I guess it was just, was it this morning, that if you want to get PPO, that you have to file for that at the county level rather than at your local police department.
And you, you are correct. You are correct. That is one thing that they do, that we do, are PPOs, I believe, I know, I don't sign them, but let me double check here, that's in the civil division? Oh, family. Yep, you're right. There it is, right there. Family domestic, PPOs, as well as an, Erpos, and you'll have to, extreme risk protection orders. And that's when you might know that a family member is having some mental health issues and you want some intervention. I would suggest that you call your local police department, you can start from there, but it certainly, you can come on down to the court and we'll take care of it. All right? Thank you all for, for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearing and approval of millage rates for December 1, 2025 tax levy.
Madam Supervisor, I open, I motion to open the hearing on the millage rates for December 1, 2025 tax levy at 7:16.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we are going to begin, Ms. Wendy, would you like to give us a summary of where we are with this public hearing?
Sure. So this year's tax rates, which will go out on December 1st to the residents, there will be, all the public safety millages and general fund, general operating millages will remain the same as they were from the previous years. We were able to balance the upcoming budget using the same millage rates. The Rhodes Millage will be rolled back in accordance with Headley, as required by Headley, and therefore, in general, the homeowner's taxes will go down. However, their inflation will be 3.1%. So everybody's taxable value, as long as you have not moved or anything, your taxable value will go up by no more than 3.1%. So although we're reducing the millage rate, taxes will go up just by inflation, which is the state requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll start with, I don't see anyone in line for the public hearing. Let me see, would anyone in the room like to make a statement or any questions on the tax rates, the millages? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:17.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Does the board have any questions on the millage rates? Diane?
I'll just make a quick comment. We do this every year. There's a form that we have to send to the county, L4029, with the millage rates, and so this is just routine, every year we do this.
Anything else? Trustee Foster?
No, I don't have anything.
No? So thank you very much for this report. It's important, you know, when people call and they ask a lot of questions about their taxes, the reason that they are being raised is because of the, the state inflation rate, but not because of Canton Township's millage rates.
Correct, and this is just for the Canton Township operating. All of the different taxing jurisdictions have their own levies, they approve them at the, you know, the county commission level, the school district level, so this is specific to Canton Township levy. So we, we don't, I don't know what's happening with the rest of the, with the rest of the taxes in the county and state.
Thank you. Do we have to enter this report or anything?
We have to move to the millage rates to be levied.
Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the millage rates be, to be levied by Canton Township on December 1, 2025, be set as the following. Charter mills at 1.4760, fire protection at 3.7480, police protection at 5.6760, and the road assessment at 1.3721, totaling it to be 12.2721.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguili. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any board or commission reports? We've had some meetings out there. No? So the Sustainability Committee, I'll just give a quick report on that. They are looking to, Ann Arbor had a sustainability incentive for businesses to do more composting and recycling, and that's of course important in our Canton community because we know that our landfill is filling up quickly. So we are trying to get businesses and schools especially, you know, our school district just at the park is 6,100 people, 60, I'm students, I'm sorry, 6,100 students, and they do not recycle and compost, so we're trying to put a little bit of pressure there. But we are going to meet with Ann Arbor and find out how they incentivize. So that's one thing for the Sustainability Committee. Also, on October 15th, we have IKEA here in Canton, and IKEA is known for its sustainability. They also take batteries and styrofoam is, can be taken there, but they want, they're going to have a Local Impact Alliance Lunch and Learn. If any of the residents want to go learn about sustainability, we're also going to record it, we'll put it on cable, so businesses and residents can learn how they can recycle and do sustainability in their homes. So that's one thing. The Technology Committee is working more on broadband. I don't know, Victor, if you want to, Director Victor, if you want to comment on that at all?
On the broadband, the township has continued to make progress with regards to what we've identified to be the challenges that are facing the township. A lot of residents have been reaching back out to the township, indicating that their services are not where it's supposed to be. Based on the reports that are coming into us, providers are saying that the township are the one really holding the whole thing down, but that's not the case. We have partnered with a consultant to be able to look at what's holding back the services in the township, and we're working to make sure that the infrastructure is upgraded to the level where services will be optimally rendered. So stay tuned, we're saying that very soon we will be doing all those things that will, clearing the grounds so that the services can be improved, i.e. improving zoning and ordinance laws that pertain to that.
Correct. There are many, there are a few providers who have asked to put up towers in Canton Township to improve their service. However, we're being, we're doing due diligence and being very purposeful about looking at the coverage of the current providers and determining where there may be some gaps. We know some businesses have said they have some gaps, some residents say they have some gaps in their internet service. So we're being very purposeful and looking where those gaps are before we make the decisions, and we'll bring it to the board about where some possibilities are. But we want to, we just don't want to let them just throw up towers everywhere because that would not be good for our community. And we're also looking at artificial intelligence, that's really big right now. The staff is going to go through, the directors and the board, if they are interested, are going to go through five hours of how to use AI in communities because it's among us. It's, it's here already, and so we want to make sure that we do the best we can with AI in our, in running our services, if, if at all, and also for cybersecurity, that's a big one also. So the Technology Committee said they'd also like to help with that. All right, anything else? Any other boards or commissions reports? All right, thank you. Now, we have public comment on agenda items only. Any public comment? Agenda items only, I do have one attendee. Says M., if you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand electronically. No public comment on agenda items. All right, can I have a motion to approve minutes?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we approve the minutes from August 26th and September 2nd, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have Treasurers report and payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguili. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion, C1, consider awarding contract to a purchase order to Carpentry Concepts for restroom renovations at Fleet Services Building and Heritage Park Restrooms. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for Fellows Creek Golf Bridge Improvement Design Services. C3, consider awarding a purchase order for the completion of the administration and public safety parking lot. And C4, request for resolution of local body government to recognize Plymouth FP Softball Diamond Club as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Michigan Gaming Control Board.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Under the general calendar, item G1.
A. I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Wayne County's local partnering initiative for township roads and authorize a township supervisor to sign the IGA.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. ASR has a negative impact on several subdivisions within the township for many years. In early 2023, Engineering Services identified several local roads that had been severely impacted and damaged by the alkali silica reaction, commonly known as ASR. The township then implemented a plan to repair or replace the most heavily damaged ASR roads using the State of Michigan's funding and the township's local roads millage program as a funding source. Subsequently, it was determined that more funding was necessary, and Wayne County agreed to close the funding gap. To facilitate the award of the dollars to the township, an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township is necessary. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I, I don't really have too much to add to this, other than, you know, this started with the funding we received from State Representative Purie, and now with the shortfall, Wayne County has stepped up and is going to help us out to complete this project. We're almost done with it, so we're pretty happy with the results so far.
Any questions or comments by the board? Summer?
I will just note that the county's portion of this is a million dollars. So grateful to get additional funding from Wayne County for this project.
How many, we had, how many subdivisions? Five?
Five subdivisions that were severely impacted, yes.
And they look great, the roads look great where they are, and they did look terrible. The, what, the ASR basically ate the base of the road and they were crumbling in some of the subdivisions, so we appreciate this million dollars. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G2, consider improving an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for reimbursement of costs for the 2025 local road improvement program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Wayne County's local partnering initiative for township roads and authorize a township supervisor to sign the IGA.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. In March of 2025, Wayne County sent out a call for projects to apply for funding through their newly created local partnering initiative for township roads. Engineering Services applied for it and was awarded construction match dollars from Wayne County through their local partnering initiative for township roads for the 2025 construction season. Wayne County has approved reimbursement of 50% of the project costs with a maximum total expenditure of $773,500 by Wayne County, and the township shall bear the remainder of the project costs. To facilitate the award of the dollars to the township, an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township is necessary. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This, similar to the prior IGA that you, the board just approved, this is also filling in some shortfalls and able to do more roads in the neighborhoods that we identified. Based upon Rhodes Millage, those program, that program allowed us to apply for these dollars.
Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3.
Madam Supervisor, I motion to approve and authorize a township supervisor to sign the amended agreement with Rehabilitation Institute of Michigan, Inc.
A support, please?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ansari?
No, no, I'm, I'm pointing to her.
Oh, you're pointing to her. By Trustee Berninski, you're throwing your voices again.
I support.
Hey, you. Please. Police Services recommending approval of a third amendment to the Rehabilitation Institute of Michigan user agreement. Staff have negotiated a sixty-month extension with two thirty-six-month option periods. Rent would start at seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents per year and increase by three percent annually. In addition, RIM will commit five thousand dollar annually in sponsorship funds to the township, bringing their total commitment to seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents per year. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. That was just one of the many ways that we attempt to maximize the space at the summit. This is one of, one of our great revenue sources for income. And the REM program that, with DMC has been a great partnership through the years, and this is a sizable increase from where we started with them. So this is a nice comparable rate to what they do in other communities, and so we're very happy with this. So be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, just a quick question. What, what are the sponsorship funds used for?
So one of the goals with that is to help with our employee wellness program. It's very difficult to come up with funds to use with employees and internal programs. And so this is one way we're able to accomplish that.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, KnowBefore Cybersecurity Program.
Madam Supervisor, I motion to approve a three-year agreement with KnowBefore totaling twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents billed as nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety cents annually for three years for the renewal of the cybersecurity training for township employees.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In October 2020, the township entered into a five-year contract with KnowBefore, the premier global cybersecurity training vendor. During this time, ITI has made extensive use of the program's features, which included training materials for current employees, new employee training, and simulated email testing. The materials available to the township are constantly refreshed by KnowBefore, which ensures that Canton employees are presented with ever-changing threat testing and challenges. This helps keep cybersecurity training front of mind for township employees so that they remain vigilant for real-world attacks. ITI is requesting permission to renew our contract with KnowBefore for cybersecurity and training services, which will expire in October 2025. Township utilizes this service to provide initial, ongoing, and remedial cybersecurity training for all township staff. Director Abeng, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. First and foremost, I want to, you know, pray for indulgence of everybody who feels that ITI is trying to annoy the heck out of them by sending you all those emails. We are really not in it just to get you, but we're doing it just to make sure that everybody is sensitized with regards to the risk that is out there today. And so our rate at the moment is about eleven point four, and we'd like to see that down. People are actually paying attention that eleven point four is somewhere down from what it used to be. And so we're encouraged about that. We're hoping that, you know, we'd like to see it come down even to the single digit or even at, yeah, it's lofty, to zero, so that we will not be worried about somebody making a mistake by clicking on something that they are not supposed to click on, because it only takes one click to bring the entire house down. And so we really appreciate the support in making sure that this utility is functional in our environment. Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I'll take questions.
Yeah, for any of you who don't know, it's a good program because it's very, it's entertaining and it keeps you. So if you press on the wrong button, it will basically, you get put on this list, and then you get this little video to watch, and you have to answer these questions. But we have come down. I mean, in terms of people just pressing on things, because as we know with cybersecurity and artificial intelligence, you can bring down a whole community quickly. So what was our rate? What was our highest rate where we weren't doing too well at the beginning?
At a point, we were just shy of twenty-one percent, but we came down to eighteen. There was a time we came down to seven point four, but we went back up. So we're working on it to make sure that, again, remember, the risk evolves, and the bad actors are always, always evolving. And so the challenges that you face yesterday are not, they are not the same type of challenge that you face in tomorrow. So we want to make sure that people are paying close attention to these evolving tactics of the bad actors.
Very true. Any questions or comments, Diane?
I'll just make a quick comment. This is great. I know we get busy, and so it trains us to really look at the emails so that we're not clicking, because the last thing we want, some of the communities around us have clicked and gotten themselves into trouble. So I do think this is a great program.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G5.
G5. Madam Supervisor, I motion to increase the blanket purchase order issued to Priority One Emergency by one hundred and fifty thousand, fifty dollars for the fiftieth anniversary badges and embroidered uniform polo shirts.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. In anticipation of the police department's milestone fiftieth anniversary in 2026, the Anniversary Committee has been working with our uniform vendor Priority One Emergency to design a special commemorative badge for sworn officers and embroidered patch polo shirts for non-sworn personnel to be incorporated into their daily uniforms. The police department is requesting to increase the blanket purchase order issued to Priority One Emergency by fifteen thousand, fifty dollars for the purchase of fiftieth anniversary badges. Budgeted forfeiture funds have been earmarked for this allowable expense. Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
Yes, I'll end up deferring to Deputy Chief Bailey and Lieutenant Colhurst, who worked on this committee. But I think it's important to realize our fiftieth anniversary is coming up. This diocese here, fifty years ago, decided that they wanted a police department. And to celebrate that, we're going to do a number of things, and this is going to be one of the things that we do, and I'll defer to Deputy Chief Bailey.
You have to, and everybody? Yes, as the director said, about forty-nine years ago, maybe not in this particular room, but in this township, the citizens and the city council decided to place their leap of faith in a very, very small police department. And over the last forty-nine years, fifty next year, this department has grown. And I can tell you, what it is, is it's a testament to service to the community, is what you're going to see next year. And I brought Lieutenant Colhurst, he's in charge of the committee. They have done some absolutely excellent work, and I'll turn it over to him so he could talk just about a few of the things that we're going to celebrate next year.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you about the work of the committee. I grew up in an organization that really honored our heritage and the level of service that we bring to the community. And I know that Chief Baugh and Deputy Chief Bailey have often told me that they wish that our officers, including me, to be quite honest, understood a little bit more about that history. So as the fiftieth anniversary came closer, we kind of had an opportunity. He's probably going to be mad at me, but I'm going to point out Officer Seifert back there, who happens to be a genealogist. He takes his family on vacations, and at times, I think, he visits cemeteries and archives to understand his own background. And he's taken that, that passion, and he started digging into Canton's history, the department's history, putting together news articles, photographs, and just really starting to understand that, that history and compile it into a book that we can pass along to the people that come after us. I'm looking in the back of the room here, and I'm seeing Tim Wright and Tom Champagne, two guys that I, made me frankly the officer that I am today. Tim, he told me an awful lot about how to be a detective, and Tom frankly kept me alive in the FTO program. So as we've been looking at how to honor those, those type of contributions to the police department, to the, to the community, one of the few things that we want to do is have that outward-facing expression of that through a uniform, so the public can be aware that, that our fiftieth anniversary is coming. That's also going to be a part of the process. It's going to be taking these news articles and having a social media push so that we can kind of have a this-day in Canton Township thing going every month. I personally found it hilarious that in nineteen seventy-six, apparently, we were defined as vigilantes by the local police department, and now today, we're seen as one of the most professional agencies in the, in the state of Michigan. That's great stuff to pass along to the community. That's great stuff to let our, our own officers know. And then there's a series of other public outreach projects, simple things like taking the badge and maybe putting it on some stickers that we hand out to kids that they tend to love to see, showing the parents, showing the kids, that, hey, we've been around for fifty years serving this community. We're happy to do it, we're proud to do it. And then part of that process is also going to be internal. So we're looking at creating some education, both hopefully for, for the board and for our own officers, to express Jeff's work to you guys in a more organized format, and also to start putting displays on our walls. We're hoping that, to honor that history and the people that created the units that give service to the community.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a clarification that this request is for fifteen thousand, fifty dollars and not one hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. All right.
I'll confirm that.
Unless I seriously overlook something, that is correct.
Chief Baugh told me to ask lots of questions, but I won't do that. I will just say congratulations on almost fifty years, and I can't wait to see what y'all do next year.
Thank you very much.
Tanya?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's, it's so cool that you're planning to put together a book about the last fifty years of history in Canton with the police department. And it's, you guys do a great job in working with our diverse community, like making people feel welcome in our community, and also keeping our, you know, our, our community at ease with, that we live in here. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
No, I want to thank, this is great. So thank you very much for, for this, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of the months of fun, fun things. So thank you.
Well, congratulations.
What everybody else said.
Okay, what everyone else. We're looking forward to this also. Can we all get the shirts, or was it just a certain group?
I'm sure we can figure something out. Our, our committee is a pretty large group. It represents people from throughout the, the organization. We really very much appreciate the support, and I'm going to pass along your good wishes to them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the table, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. So before we begin our festivities, we have, we're going to read something at the end, but we will have for Chief Chad, but we have additional public comments. Any additional public comments? Additional public comments? There's nobody online anymore. Please go to the pedestal and give your name.
My name is Michael Schultz. I live on Deion Street. The other day, we had an accident in my house. The fire department came. I consider what they did to save my wife's life. I want to give a shout out to the fire department. Can't say enough. I'm sorry the chief's not here tonight. However, I've been married a long time, and thought I was going to have a heart attack, but they came through, and you know what? When you see these guys, make sure you shake their hand, tell them thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you and your wife are okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we are going to move on to the next part. Any administrative comments before we go to close soon? No? Any board comments before? No? Okay.
Actually, I have something.
Okay.
Yeah. Yesterday, there was news of a horrific incident in Canton, and I'm sure many of you have heard of it. I don't even know where to start, but I will say thank you to our police officers who responded to the situation. I hope that we, as a community, can take the time to take care of one another and to recognize signs of domestic abuse where it happens, and to uplift one another, and to look to police officers as a resource, to look to your communities as a resource, to look to your elected officials as a resource. There are help centers you can call if you're going through domestic abuse or violence. But I just wanted to thank the police officers who are on duty for that situation.
Thank you, Amara. Thank you. All right, thank you. So today is Chief Chad's last board meeting. He will be retiring this week on Friday. Friday is his last day, and his family is here also. Would you like to stand up, please? Just raise your hand. So the reason we're doing this today at the board meeting is because a lot of community members started finding out that you were retiring, and they wanted to be here to celebrate with you. Those that couldn't sent in a lot of comments and statements, so I just want to kind of read a few of them. But I'm going to start first with Arb Caruso had written up some of your police service. So this is a little biography of what you've done. So Retirement Recognition of Chief Chad Baugh, Director of Police Services. After nearly three decades of dedicated service, the Charter Township of Canton proudly recognizes Chad Baugh, who has retiring as Director of Police Services following an impressive career of service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to public safety in our community. Chad's twenty-nine-year career with the Canton Police Department began with a call to service that would define his professional life. Over the years, he's served in nearly every rank within the department, including police officer, undercover detective, detective sergeant, detective sergeant, lieutenant, deputy director, and ultimately Director of Police Services. His ascent through the department is a testament to his integrity, leadership, and dedication to fostering a safe, inclusive, and transparent community. Chad is a lifelong learner and an advocate for continual, continuous professionalism and development. He earned a Master of Science in Technology Studies from Eastern Michigan University, a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Madonna University, and completed the School of Police Staff and Command at EMU. He is also a Michigan Certified Public Manager, having completed the program at Saginaw Valley State University. Throughout his career, Chad was recognized not only for his law enforcement expertise, but for his innovative leadership and community-centered initiatives. Some of his most impactful contributions include: Creator of the Embedded Police Clinician Program; Integrating Mental Health Support Within Police Operations; Founder of the Community Engagement Team; Strengthening Relationships With All Segments of the Community; Developer of the Juvenile Diversion Program; Offering Support and Alternative Pathways For Youth Involved in the Justice System; Architect of a Comprehensive Police Statistics Dashboard; Promoting Transparency and Accountability; Leader in Establishing a Constitutional and Holistic Policing Model; Ensuring Practices Aligned with Community Values and Constitutional Rights; Co-Creator of the Financial Investigative Partnership; Advancing Collaborative Investigative Strategies; Driving Force Behind Progressive Approaches to an Organized Retail Crime; Bringing Innovative Solutions to Complex Criminal Trends; Collaborator on Civilian Police Oversight; Engaging the Citizen Review Committee in Examining Misconduct, Bias, and Use of Force Concerns. Chad also served beyond Canton with distinction through two appointments to the Governor's Human Trafficking Task Force and is a board member on the Hagera Health SUD Advisory Board. He has received numerous awards and citations for his service and dedication to excellence in law enforcement. As Chad departs from his position in Canton, he leaves behind a legacy of leadership, compassion, and community trust. His vision has shaped the future of policing in Canton, and his influence will be felt for generations to come. With heartfelt thanks and best wishes for the future, we congratulate Director Baugh on his retirement. on his retirement. Now, that's Chief Chad's biography, but a lot of community members have reached out. We just want to start with this. So whereas Chief Chad Baugh is retiring after 29 years of service with the Canton Police Department, whereas Chief Chad has been recognized across the region and state for his thoughtful and lasting programs, including Juvenile Justice, Youth Diversion, Embedded Clinician, the Canton Coalition for Inclusive Communities, Citizen-led Police Transparency and Guidance Committee, among many other statewide services and honors. Whereas Chief Chad has strengthened the community through his efforts of outreach, breaking down barriers, and building trust throughout Canton's diverse population. Whereas many community members have expressed their appreciation of Chief Chad's leadership through the following words. Chief Chad has always been kind and approachable. He has been a good friend to the many communities. It was always a joy to see him at our annual outreach IFTARs at the MAC. We are losing a big one with this retirement. He is one of the finest police chiefs I have had the honor to be connected with over the years. I've always looked forward to meeting him at our events and was proud to have him there. His kindness is often worn on his sleeve because he is such a great leader. His leadership has helped to make Canton Police the best department in the state. Chief Chad and his guidance will be missed by many. Now, those are all separate separate people. Now, therefore, I, Anne Marie Graham Hudak, Supervisor of Canton Township and acting on behalf of the Canton Board of Trustees, to hereby congratulate Chief Chad on his 29 years of service to the Canton community and we wish him good luck on his new journey. But we're gonna open the microphone to anybody that wants to go up and say a few words. No, crying's okay. We've done that at a couple of meetings already today, so that's all right. But would anybody like to go up and say anything? I mean, you don't have to now because we're gonna have a little celebration after, but oh, yeah, go Steve. Steve, the Harvard man is gonna say a few words. Stephen Snyderman, our trustee, our previous trustee, retired.
She outed me. Well, where do you go? Oh, there he is. Yeah, everybody, come on in.
Come on in if you want to come and sit down. Come on in. Plenty of chairs up front. This isn't church.
I had the privilege of being a trustee for 12 years and during that time, I also had the privilege of hiring the chief of our police department, the head of our police department, three times. And each time, all great, great men, great people, great officers, and I was proud to have them lead our community. But it was this last time that I was able to do that, that I feel like our community really had the absolute best of the best. And Chad led our community through some really difficult times, things that other community members, other other leaders of our community's police department, public safety, didn't have to go through. And he did it with grace and excellence, care, sensitivity. We went through a pandemic. We went through very difficult trials in race relations in our country and I feel like our community didn't feel it as hard as other places because of Chad Baugh. So I want to just thank him for spending the time here in this community. And I've put my house on the market, I'm moving to Adrian. Can't live here without you. But no, thank you very much and I am thankful to the board for honoring you tonight. So thank you very much.
Oh, wait, not yet, chief, not yet. Anyone else? You can't talk before we have others. Anyone else? Oh, Jesus, okay. You can talk to me afterwards. Oh, wait, the board needs to say something first.
All right.
Okay. Tanya?
I was very surprised when I got the news that we are losing our police chief to a different community, from a different position. But, you know, before we got the news, you know, Chief Baugh called me and called us and let us know that he was making this decision and he was how he wanted us to, you know, after this, what we needed to do. He even has a plan for that. And we appreciate that he was being so forward-thinking. But I think the most important thing in my last five years of interaction with the chief has been how he has led with empathy and I think that was the most important thing for me. And I have reached out to me, some community members have reached out to me in difficult times and they wanted the help of the police and how he has given me the resources to help them. You know, he will, he will tell you that he wants to follow the rule of the law, but he does it with so much grace and empathy. And we are, I would say, we don't usually say this about the police department, but he's probably one of the most progressive police chiefs in this whole area of Wayne County or probably in Michigan.
Thank you.
I'm not even sure where to begin. I can't remember the first time I started asking about getting a social worker for this police department. And I was always told, no, it's not something that we could do. But it took you to make it happen. It took real leadership. It took a vision for the future and laying the groundwork for what you wanted policing to look like in Canton. I remember after George Floyd was murdered, you and I had a conversation about building trust, making sure people had faith in their police department. And you have led on that in a way that has been a model for law enforcement in the state of Michigan. I'm so proud to have worked with you over the last nine years. And I really think together, you can't cry because I'm gonna cry.
Crying's allowed, I said that.
We have left a legacy in this community that we can all be proud of. I'm so proud of you, Chad, and I can imagine the great things that you're gonna do in Adrian.
Summer, Tanya?
I just want to thank you, Chad, and I want to thank your family too, for allowing you to be with us as many years as you have. You've been a great leader and you've proven yourself. I'm happy for your new chapter in your life, but we certainly will miss you. And then I know I will, I'll miss our runs to the bank every week, so.
One time we had a bank robbery, we were right next to it. Oops.
Yeah, but bless you and your family.
So the first time I met Chad, we had a different police chief and I was talking to Chad about a situation that was traumatizing for my family. And I cried. And I'm gonna try not to cry today because I don't want to be having a first meeting and a last meeting where I cried. But at the time that we had that meeting, Chad impressed me with his empathy and gentleness. And since then, I've been so honored to have served alongside him. He's been generous with his time. Whenever I've had a question, he's always responsive. He's shared his knowledge. He's shared his caring for our community and Canton is the better for Chad Baugh.
Mara? I met you in November of last year. I'm a baby board member. And, you know, I think you were the first department head that I met. And I was so thrown off. I was so thrown off. I was like, I, I don't know, you know, my assumption was police chief means very aggressive dude, like will not want to listen, will have their own agenda, because my experience with police in other areas has always been negative. But then when I met you, I saw this, you know, man who saw me as a human, who clearly saw Canton residents as human beings and showed up with like, how can we do better for our community? It wasn't just about numbers. It wasn't just about, you know, how many arrests are we making? It was about how can I show up for the people around me and how can I empathize for them? And what are the gaps in the resources that our communities have? And it was just so disorienting for me and challenged everything that I believed and my own interactions with police, right? And as I've gotten to know you over the last few months, it's just been such an honor. And I'm sad that you and I haven't had a chance to work for that long, but even as I've gone through the throes of life, you know, you have been there for me, you have listened to me, you've lent kind words to me, you've offered kind words to me. And I'm very, very grateful to know that there are people like you out there who serve as an exemplary member of our community. We are proud to know that you are our police chief. And honestly, I'm gonna say you're our police chief forever, I don't care. So you're the only police chief I've known, but like you're my favorite for sure. And you have so many, you had so many plans, you had a very strong and clear vision. And I think it takes a real sense of leadership and ownership and responsibility and accountability to be able to do that. So thank you for your service, genuinely from the bottom of my of my heart. Thank you for your service and good luck with your journey.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we would like to thank your family because being a police officer's family is very tough and for all the nights you have and you guys have gone through a lot. So thank you for that. Thank you for being, for being you. Thank you for being a good chief and thank you for being a friend to us and into our community. But we will let you talk now because we're all gonna start crying, so.
I love the limelight, so thanks for the opportunity. The one thing I would say, the future of Canton's even brighter. You know, the folks that are standing here today are outstanding. So I tried to get through this. I got my 2001 Detective Bureau in the back, so thank you, Timmy, Tommy, for coming. So that's pretty cool. Just to be clear though, before we get started, what you're gonna see after me is just, it's gonna be outstanding, so get ready for it. I stand here, I'm very honored, I'm very honored as I close this career in policing. I'm incredibly honored. Through this journey, it's, it's been a great honor to serve the citizens, to work with the citizens. Most of all, it's, my blessings are the family that you see here today. They walk beside me every step of the way from the beginning of this career, though. There's, the one thing that's clear is this job is not about one person. And I do appreciate the honor. I'm humbled by it. But this foundation was set long ago and it continues to get better and the folks will do a great job in the future. I think it's important to realize too, what we do, it's about Canton. It's about the service to the citizens. It's about our families, our, our community, and a chance for everyone to thrive, just like these mission statements say, is for everyone to thrive. And before you can thrive, I have to mention my mom's right there, Mary, Mary Baugh. Constant source of encouragement, love, sacrifice. My father, he's been gone 16 years now. He was an example of hard work, loyalty, that's never left me. His presence is with me right now. I have countless support from my in-laws, extended family. I've been blessed. In this department, which is what we're really here about, it's a privilege to serve along the best, the very best in the state. I've been from Ontario to the Mexican border in Arizona, working cases, and I've seen, I've seen everything. These are the best. The men and women here are just not coworkers, they're extraordinary humans. Together, we faced all kinds of tragedies, difficult cases, triumphs, shared countless laughs. That's one thing you'll get with the new chief, you'll laugh a lot. I told everybody today, extend your staff meetings a little bit longer because he tends to enjoy himself a bit, so. God love him. I also recognize those that came before us. He laid, they laid the foundation that built traditions and standards that we carry forward. And along the way, I've been fortunate to work with some great elected officials, department heads, community leaders, stakeholders, who supported us in this mission. But the greatest blessing is what people come to Canton for is their family. I had the chance to go home to a beautiful family for many years. To my wife Rebecca, my rock, my confidant, my everything, I love you. To my daughter Sophia, my son Sam, you're my world. Love you guys. So every path in this career, you've been on my mind, hardest. Through the hardest days, I was always coming home to you. I knew what my, my most important role was to be a husband and a dad. Thank you. Sorry for the crying. I'm deeply, deeply, deeply grateful to have worked for Canton and for this board. Supervisor Anne Marie Graham Hudak, thank you. Forget about the boards of the past, we've always had support. When someone sits in front of me, when I give them a job, no matter who's in this, behind the the diocese, whoever's elected, we've always had great support, but you've never had support like this before. What you guys do is important work. It's great work, it's hard work, and I'm truly humbled to have served as your police chief, but this is the beginning of another 50 years and I really appreciate it. So thanks for the honor. It's an honor of a professional life, but it's not about me, it's about citizens. Thank you.
And we, as he said, we will have our interim chief will be Deputy Chief Joe Byler. You want to stand up? Just introduce yourself to everybody. So we're gonna close the meeting and please stick around. We have cookies and water and saying Mary meant. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oops, Madam Supervisor, I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Chief, can you come?